All right, I'm gonna call to order the town council regular meeting Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Our invocation will be done by Pastor Jonathan D. Quinn of the beautiful Savior Evangelical Lutheran Church.
Heavenly Father, through the psalmist you remind us, unless the Lord watches over the city, the guards stand watch in vain. Therefore, we come to you and place into your hands the needs of our town, asking you to keep us from any wicked schemes and cunning plans of people or powers who would do us harm. Give wisdom, good judgment, moral purpose to our town's government. We know that their task is difficult. We know that their duties are many. We know that their responsibilities are heavy. We pray for them that you would support them with your power. That crime and lawlessness would be controlled in our communities, that righteousness and integrity would always prevail in our neighborhoods. Make us all law-abiding citizens who seek the welfare of our community. Grant us all the strength to serve our neighbors and you, our Savior God, with faithfulness and untiring zeal, just as your Son came not to be served, but to serve, to give his life as a ransom for many. Continue to give us town officials who dedicate themselves wholeheartedly to you and to their tasks and assignments. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, your only Son, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Dennis, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have a special presentation. Ms. Leanna Morrison, U.S. Navy Wings of Gold recipient. Could you come up and you can bring your family member up as well? And you stay right there and then we'll come down. We'll get some pictures after. All right, the proclamation. Whereas Leanna Morrison, a native of Moncks Corner, South Carolina, earned her wings of gold as a naval flight officer and aviator on August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. And whereas Leanna's journey of excellence began at Berkeley High School, where she was a standout athlete, basketball and track, earning accolades such as the Post and Courier All Country Female Athlete of the Year, South Carolina Gatorade Athlete of the Year, and South Carolina Miss Track. And whereas at the University of South Carolina, she contributed to the women's basketball team's first conference championship and Sweet Sixteen appearance, while also setting a four hundred meter hurdles record at UNC Charlotte. And whereas Leanna's passion for aviation was sparked by her work as a ramp agent at local airports, which led her to a decision to pursue a career in naval aviation. And whereas in twenty twenty one, Leanna earned an associate's degree in aviation maintenance and worked as a flight line technician at Boeing, later enlisting in the U.S. Navy in twenty twenty two, commissioning in twenty twenty three, and earning her wings of gold in twenty twenty four. Selected to fly the Boeing P eight A Poseidon. And whereas, along with her athletic and professional achievements, Leanna has mentored young athletes as an assistant head coach for the Berkeley High School Girls Track and Field Team, inspiring them to reach for greatness. And whereas, Leanna's dedication to her community and mentoring young adults reflects her commitment to giving back and empowering others to achieve their dreams. Now therefore, I, Thomas J. Hamilton, Jr., Mayor of Moncks Corner, on behalf of the people of Moncks Corner and South Carolina, hereby honor and commend Leanna Morrison for her outstanding achievements as a naval flight officer, her leadership, her contributions to her community. We are proud of her accomplishments and look forward to her continued success in serving our nation and inspiring future generations. Signed, Thomas Hamilton.
Do you want to go over and have a few words?
I just have a few. I mean, you pretty much heard the background when you read it. The last time I was here being recognized was with three of my best friends. We're still my best friends. We won the four by one hundred meter championship. It was the same love and support then from this community. I mean, you guys haven't missed a beat. I'm getting emotional. The Facebook messages, every time I come back to town and I see people in the grocery store, no matter what it is, this community is the reason I'm able to go out and do everything that I've done. And I'll always come back and try to mentor and stay tied to this community in any way I can. And I just wanna say thank you, Mayor Hamilton, Ms. Marilyn. I didn't meet Ms. Marilyn. Right here. Yeah, thank you for organizing this and having me and my family here. Again, I'll always be tied to this community. Thank you guys so much for your support.
Thank you. All right, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor's report. It was another busy, busy month. But first, I wanna introduce Hannah Harris. She's our new athletic coordinator. She started August twelfth. She kinda jumped into the frying pan, and I'm gonna tell you something. I've seen her out in action. You know, we've had tournaments where we've been shorthanded, and she'll jump in the concession stands. She'll help with the field. She'll do whatever is needed. So, thank you for being here. You are a great worker, and we're looking forward to a lot of good things out of you, so. All right, so normally my Mondays and Tuesdays are Miracle League, you know. I hate missing them when I get an event or something. I even joked to Marilyn, why can't we have county, our town council meetings on Thursday so I can be at the Miracle League? But Thursday, September twenty sixth, I attended the Google announcement for two new data centers, one in Ridgeville in Dorchester County, and the expansion of the existing Berkeley County campus. And, you know, that's exciting. Another one point five billion dollars coming to Berkeley County. And that's, you know, will filter out to us as well. On the twenty sixth, I participated, participated in the ribbon ceremony for the Burn Barrel Boutique. Mayor Pro Tem David Dennis was there as well. The twenty seventh, I attended and participated in the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Berkeley Children's Advocacy Center. Councilmember Lloyd was in attendance. Friday, the twenty seventh, staff held a badge-pinning ceremony for our two new firemen. Due to Hurricane Helene, the Fire Academy had to cancel the graduation ceremonies. So, thank you to the staff who really put together a ceremony at the last minute. So, it was very special. Of course, the twenty eighth, I attended the Dalton Voice Memorial Bike and Car Ride in Moncks Corner. There was a great participation. You know, our community has a way of coming together and helping people in need, and that's really special. I also went to the Moss Grove Fall Festival and the Colonial Days at Santee Canal Park. Monday, the thirtieth, we had our groundbreaking on our all-inclusive playground. I'm gonna tell you something, that's gonna be a special place. You know, the town, I think, has really stepped up, our council, all the planning behind it. It's gonna be a very exciting few months as we watch that park come up. Monday, the thirtieth through the October fourteenth, we have Music on Main. If you get a chance, go out and catch that. You know, I think next week is it. It has been every week more people coming out there, and the weather is so nice. So, if you get a chance this Monday, please go out there. Tuesday, October first, I attended the National Police Night Out sponsored by the Moncks Corner Police Department. That was a really cool event. They set up different areas. The kids seemed to really love it, so I'm looking forward to that happening every year. October fourth, fifth, and sixth, I was asked to open the rodeo each night and welcome everyone to the town of Moncks Corner. I mean, they sold out. I'm waiting on attendance figures. The vendors did great, great crowds. It's a really good event for the town of Moncks Corner. And then Monday, October seventh, I did my first book reading from one of the local elementary schools, Whitefield Elementary School. It's always exciting for me to get out, see the kids, and spend some time out in the community like that. Also, on Monday, October seventh, I was asked to go and introduce Supervisor Johnny Crib. They're doing these community events. They had one at Berkeley High School. I was gonna go do that and leave, and I ended up staying for the whole thing. Those are a lot of good information. They have people on the ground to ask questions to. So, I encourage people to try to catch one of the remaining ones. Also, on Thursday, October ninth, I attended senior night for the Berkeley High School Girls Tennis Team. That was another great event to watch these young ladies as they finish their careers at Berkeley High School. Saturday, the twelfth, I was at the Wassamassaw Indians Pow Wow Event where I spoke. That's another wonderful event. They have it every year at Santee Canal Park. I would encourage anyone to go out there and visit. And then Sunday, we had the first annual kickball tournament put on by the Berkeley County's Coroner's Office. You know, I wanna thank our rec department. They had a couple of people out there to kinda support it. We went out there. We had a really good time. I'm hoping next year to have a Moncks Corner Town Team, so y'all get ready to get your kickball gear on. And finally, this morning, I went to Goose Creek up at the Co-op, and I was a guest speaker at the Pioneers of Change, celebrating cultural heritage specifically to the Hispanic community. It was wonderful, the speakers, the dance, the food. Just to sit a couple hours with that group, it was amazing. And in our future, on the twenty first is our last Music on Main. I'm telling you, get out there, go out, spend some time, have some fellowship with people. It's really a good time. Then Wednesday, October thirtieth, the town of Moncks Corner will hold their thirteenth annual Halloween Festival on Main Street from five thirty to eight P.M. There will be trunk-or-treat, a costume contest, music games, and a haunted house, and much more. And I'm really looking forward to participating with that for my first time. Thursday, the thirty first through Saturday, the second, the town will hold at the Moncks Corner Depot, the Moncks Corner Crypto Despair. Come join us for frights, food trucks, and so much more. Tickets are five dollars each. All proceeds will benefit the Relay for Life. And as always, I have met with many of our citizens, took phone calls and emails, and that's the end of my report. Administrator Lord?
Mayor, Council, I have, excuse me, I have several things to update you on that we've got going on in this new fiscal year. The Hill Warren Drainage Project, the design on that is fairly well complete, and we expect to submit to SCDOT for permitting this week. Once that permit is approved by SCDOT, then we can go through the bidding process. So, we're hoping to be able to, in the spring, be able to bid that project and move forward with it. It is a smaller scope than we originally anticipated for the area because of the cost of the project. But there may be some other funding opportunities from the same funding source that we will try for. The Fox Bank Master Arms, we expect construction in short this month, so hopefully we'll see some movement out there. The Whitefield and Jolly Bridge improvements, the utility moves have been completed or in process of being completed. They box culverts that had to be ordered, which is kind of a big delay. They're expected to come in November, so that project is moving along well, moved along well also. The R.C. Dennis Sidewalk got a shot in the arm. The grant that we applied for, the tap grant through the COG, we were number one on the list of recommended projects. That was approved by the CHATS Committee. That still has to go to SCDOT Commission to approve, but that's one in a quarter of me acknowledged for that project. That looks fairly well promising. Hopefully, in December, they're gonna meet and approve it. Once they do that, then it becomes a DOT project, so we will not be doing anything on that in-house, but the project can move forward. The Land and Water Conservation Fund has given us a verbal approval on the grant we applied for, for Lacey Park. We applied for five hundred thousand. We have not heard that we got all five hundred thousand, but we have heard that we were approved for the grants. And so, we're expecting to hear later this month more details about the grant administration and what we got in the process of doing it, but that's gonna help with that project. Of course, we included it in our budget, so it's good that we did receive it. Excuse me, the impact fee analysis, that was in the budget, is underway. The consultants met with our staff this last week, and so they'll be crunching the numbers from that. And then hopefully, in the next couple of months, we will get the report back. It won't be soon, but it'll be, it's forthcoming. We do have the qualifications for firms that are interested in doing the architectural services for the town hall project. That's being reviewed by staff right now. And then, right now, we have the UDO proposals out, and those are supposed to come in on November first. Our hope is to have both of those to you for consideration at the November council. A lot of projects, a lot of things going on, but if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
All right, new business, intergovernmental agreement, acceptance of roads for maintenance. Administrator Lord?
Yes, Council, remember, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Berkeley County for, you know, any new roads in town that meet their standards will go into their system. That agreement has sunsetted, and it's time to renew it. And so, this new agreement that's before you, it has the same context as new developments come online. They still have to meet Berkeley County standards. It will be maintained by Berkeley County, and they will go through the permitting process and reviews and inspections and everything as before. The only difference is, any new roads going forward won't be dedicated to Berkeley County. They'll just be dedicated for public use. And should the one cent sales tax ever sunset, then those roads would then revert back to town's responsibility for maintenance. There is a clause in there giving us some time to be able to prepare for that eventuality, should it happen. But this is a result of many conversations and, you know, attorney broadens hard work with Berkeley County to bring this agreement to you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Show move, second.
Discussion?
Yeah. When would that take effect as far as the, as far as timeline goes? What are we looking at when that first road would be that would be part of this agreement? Is it right now, or is it anything going forward after tonight?
I believe, you may wanna address this, but.
I think it becomes effective upon being executed by both the town and the county, whatever that date happens to be. And it'll be soon, I expect, after this.
And that's a, that's a big undertaking for the town, should that go away, and that's obviously very concerning. So, given that, and I know we'd have some time and those types of things, but given that we would be taking those on, how do we see, how do we see being prepared for that, should that issue arise?
Well, with the UDO, we're gonna be addressing a lot of the road issues so far as, you know, how we review them and how we inspect them. And all that will be taken in and rolled into that process so that we'll be able to pick that up. I would liken it to how we did the stormwater, when we decided to go through the process of being a designated authority with DEHAC so that we could do stormwater reviews. We pretended to be a MS four before we had to be one. And so, we did the training, we did the, you know, put the processes in place so that we could do these things before we had to. And I anticipate that we will face the same way.
Any other?
Any other, any other option for this that we saw that, I mean, I know, I know y'all have extensively looked at this, but just as we move forward for public discussion, I mean, it's, any other option to this that we saw out there? Other than just having to take these on potentially at some point?
I think a lot of that, to answer that question, gets into negotiations with the contractual arrangement, and so that would be more of an executive session conversation. But I can tell you that this is the best effort.
Well, thank y'all for the effort y'all did. I appreciate that.
I don't foresee the one cent sales tax going away. I think.
I don't either.
Last time it was on the referendum, I think it received over seventy percent support from the county, and people are willing to pay that, that one cent, considering the conditions of the roads. So, I don't, I don't see it going anywhere.
But I also wanna thank y'all. Y'all do a lot of hard work to stay ahead of this, and it's much appreciated, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second? I mean, sorry, all those opposed? I mean, I'm sorry. All those in favor, all those opposed? Am I lost here? Okay.
You have a motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
You already did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. I got a little confused on that one. All right, so finally, ordinance first reading, consider an annexation A N dash twenty four dash O two, a zoning map amendment request for one parcel, TMS one eight one dash zero zero dash zero one dash zero two four, totaling nine point nine nine acres located on Westbury Lane and U.S. Highway fifty two. The parcel will be zoned single-family residential R three to allow single-family attached townhomes, dwelling units. Justin?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This property, as you mentioned, is on U.S. Fifty Two. It's about nine point nine acres. I apologize, the slides were not installed. Long story short, this is a rehearing of a similar request on the same property. It's nine point nine nine acres on fifty two near Westbury. It's right across the street from the Halsted property. The applicant submitted to Planning Commission in January of this past year for a planned development with about seventy nine, I believe, townhomes and about half an acre of commercial, which was staff's recommendation based on all the options presented to it at that time. Planning Commission voted to recommend denial in January. It came before y'all in March of twenty twenty four, and at first reading, y'all denied it. At that point, the applicant went back, regrouped. They've now submitted for straight R three townhomes. Unfortunately, this is not a conditional zoned district or request, so the number of units is unclear. Since it hasn't been engineered yet, that's the hard part. Per the zoning ordinance, by right with R three, they are allowed up to fifteen dwelling units per acre. If you put that in comparison to the Halsted property, which is currently under construction, that is significantly different. So, we got it back up, and I apologize. I guess I must have forgotten to press save. But the property is currently zoned Ag one or Flex one in the Agricultural District of Berkeley County. That's agricultural and residential with rural landscape and historical character. That's what the county has it zoned now. The permitted uses by their section of their Berkeley County zoning ordinance is agricultural, ecotourism, and some residential, single-family and duplexes. Previously, they sought annexation and zoning map amendment, as I said, for a PUD for about sixty seven townhomes, so I was a little off. I apologize. And about, basically, that totaled seven point zero three dwellings per acre. The commercial, as I mentioned, was almost half an acre. They sought any use allowed in C two, which included gas stations, repair garages, retail sales with drive-throughs, campgrounds, liquor stores, and so forth. As I mentioned, January, Planning Commission recommended approval. I apologize, I might have said denial, but y'all did in March deny that at first reading. The property is highlighted in that red dashed area. The PUD R is the Halsted property I previously mentioned. You have the neighborhood to the north and the neighborhood to the south. Obviously, you can see the dark purple PDC. That is what is the remnants of Fox, sorry, Moss Grove. And then further north of that is the Carolina Groves Project. Obviously, fifty two runs the gamut of north and south bisecting the screen. This is a more zoomed-in approach. You can see the PUD R, which is the Halsted property, and I believe that's called Riverstone, the R three that is single-family detached to the north, and that should be completely built out. This is the property with some wetland delineation. You can see some floodplain, which is different to the south, touches a little bit, not by much, but the wetlands is about an acre per the applicant's own survey. It shows that, which we'll get into in a second, but you can see the proximity of fifty two. What they are requesting is single-family attached or R three, which is basically duplexes and townhomes. The minimum lot size for those by right with the zoning ordinance is two thousand, and it is sixteen dwellings per acre per the zoning ordinance. That is what they can do by right. So, y'all approve this at the second reading. If they can fit them, they can fit them. There is no max number with regards to what they promised you and things, because again, this is not conditionally zoned, so it's just something to keep in mind. The project, as it relates to others in the area, Riverstone is three point four eight dwelling units per acre. That is single-family detached. Casabo Meadows, which is getting under construction this week, is two point four seven. The Halsted PD is a hundred forty four dwelling units per acre, which is two point zero eight dwelling, or I'm sorry, a hundred forty four units, which equals two point oh eight. So, what is requested is the fifteen dwelling units per acre, or a hundred forty nine by math calculations. Now, I will be the first one to admit that is probably not what they can get on the property because of open space and right-of-way dedication, but it is what they are allowed by right in zoning. Wouldn't be doing my job for y'all if I didn't tell you all the abilities. That being said, you see the second yellow line in there, which is about forty nine and four point nine dwellings per acre. The applicant provided to staff in the Planning Commission the night of a sketch plan of what it may look like, which is about forty nine units on about nine point nine nine acres. So, that's where we're getting the four point nine, and again, that came from the applicant. I can't stress this enough. While that is appreciated that the applicant provided that plan, in no way, shape, or form can that plan be conditioned to this property. They decide to store more on there or less, it's entirely up to what is by right, because they are only asking for by right. The adjacent property, again, is Flex one to the north with some general commercial Berkeley County, to the north with the funeral home. To the south is Flex one. The east, you have some Flex one, and obviously to the west, you have Flex one, but the east directly across the street would be that R three and the PUD R, which is the Halsted property. Transportation to TIA will be applicable and required by staff prior to preliminary plat approval. And that will look into the decelerates, possibly proximity of driveways and things of that nature. Obviously, that will get checked by our own traffic engineers, well as SCDOT when that time is appropriate. The twenty twenty four comp plan, which was recently approved, I believe in May of this year, has designated this area Town Character Residential. The highlights of that is mixed residential types, near downtown or commercial corridors with single-family houses, duplexes, triplexes, and small-scale apartments. Townhomes are not on there, but that is up for debate depending on how you wanna interpret duplexes and triplexes. However, the property is inundated. As you can see, that dashed peach-colored line with the highway commercial overlay. The project is highlighted in red. This is the future land use map of the comp plan, twenty twenty four comp plan. This is it zoomed in. I'm not sure where the county came up or the COG came up with that line. We'll get into that second, but staff believes that the entire property is inundated with that thousand-foot corridor overlay. This is the survey provided by the applicant. As you can see, the blue I highlighted for their delineated wetlands they showed on the survey, as well as the property in red. That orange line to the far left is what I believe by measurement, a thousand feet from the right-of-way, to be inundated by the highway commercial corridor overlay. That being said, what is that? It's a low-intensity. And that's, I apologize, that's incorrect as well. It's a high-intensity commercial overlay with some residential behind it. You're looking for everything along fifty two that already exists. Think it's Fox Bank with anything from a Fox Bank dental to a Wendy's. So, that's, that's, that's for a different overlay, and I apologize for the copy-and-paste error on my part. But it is intended to have higher density behind it, but it is mixed use, and it is desired to have mixed use along fifty two, which is what y'all approved, Planning Commission recommended, and the COG recommended as well. We do feel that out of the, I think, fourteen different goals and implementation strategies, which do run the gamut beyond just planning and zoning, this project does, is in harmony with one of those strategies, which allows for a range of residential. this project does, is in harmony with one of those strategies, which allows for a range of residential uses to support housing opportunities. However, we do feel it directly conflicts with at least two of those, which is sustainable community by insu- by ensuring current infrastructure, as well as identifying and preserving community assets that contribute to town's unique small-town character. The biggest concern staff has is townhomes need to be walkable. There are no sidewalks in the area. It's not surrounded or directly adjacent outside of a fi- a four-lane major US highway to any other residential, and we feel like it's out of place, and these two kind of coincide with that thought. That being said, staff's concern to recap is additional density compared to the surrounding area, the sixteen dwellings per acre, which again, they can't get, but they can try, compared to Halsted across the street, under construction, two point oh eight, three-acre dwellings per acre, and then others in vicinity, never reached anything beyond four. This is not conditional, so they can't promise y'all anything in terms of the number, that we can hold their feet to the fire. It does conflict with the future land use plan, in staff's opinion. It does conflict with two strategies and, and strategies of the twenty twenty-four comp plan. We feel that it lacks a mix of housing type. It's just one housing type as it's proposed, single-family attached, and commercial opportunities. And again, to my comment earlier, it's not very walkable with anything. It literally has no sidewalks anywhere, and the closest adjacent is across Four Lane Highway. Staff recommends denial. At that point, Planning Commission heard this. They recommended approval, three-two, recommend approval of the project, and then as its first reading tonight. The applicant has their attorney or, or legal representation here, as well as the property owner and their real estate representatives. I'm available for any questions, should you have any.
Justin, I, I kind of wonder why we're even here on this one again, but my philosophy is whenever we go and have someone want to annex, my first questions are, is it good for the town of Monks Corner and the residents of the town of Monks Corner? With this not having any commercial, no walkability, a little island by itself, you know, I'm just, I'm just kind of shaking my head of, of why we're seeing it again. Is anything significantly changed from the last time we heard this?
The ordinance allows a reconsideration of a previously denied project for one of two reasons. One of those is significant change in the area. There has not been any new approvals. Halsted, which is under construction, was approved in twenty twenty-two. So in two years, we have not seen any new applications or approvals in the immediate vicinity, so no, sir. The other aspect being that there was new evidence that was not presented at the time of the denial, and that is, I believe the applicant disagrees, a new plan is not something they had at the time. They have it now, but that doesn't, that's not what the ordinance states. The ordinance states is evidence that wasn't previously heard, not new evidence.
Okay.
But that's, Planning Commission did recommend or, or did vote five-nothing to allow a reconsideration.
They did remove the commercial aspect from this from the original, correct?
That, that is correct, but again, the ordinance states evidence that was not heard at that time, not a change in plan.
And, and something else that, that concerns me is, you know, this is zoned Berkeley County, and they're coming to us for annexation. I just, I want people to understand that, you know, we're, we're not second choice. You don't come to us for an easier path, and we're not going to always have an easier path for, for people. If it doesn't fit with what our comprehensive plan is, I think that, that we're going to be standing firm, I hope, to address these type of things. Because I don't, I don't see where it's changed much at all, so that's just where I'm at.
I do have one question, Justin.
Yes, sir.
I'm not really good with numbers, but if you can back up on these slides, you said the original proposal, and I'm going way back in my memory, was sixty-seven dwellings there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we had sixty-seven townhomes?
Yes, sir.
And did I see correctly that the new proposal is actually less townhomes, forty-nine, but we haven't seen a conceptual drawing?
Well, the, the staff has seen a conceptual drawing. The issue with this is they're asking for a by-right standardized zoning district. So anything that they show us is not binding. They show you a plan tonight saying three townhomes, and you all approve it on that basis. If the zoning ordinance allows for up to fifteen dwellings per acre, what they promised you, I can't hold them to. It's not, it's not a negotiated district. They are showing in that sketch plan, they showed the Planning Commission and, and staff, forty-nine units. Question that I had was the width of the property, along with the buffer that they showed on the new plan, is roughly an acre. They took out half an acre of open space and half an acre of commercial, and somehow they came out with thirty less, twenty less units. So again, without dimensions on this plan, I'm not sure how the lots are laid out with regards to size. A, a, and, and a lot of this is obviously hard to judge without an actual engineered plan, so I would leave that to the applicant to express how they plan on laying this out and how they, how many number of units they can actually get. Without an engineered plan, I don't know that anybody can tell you with any kind of certainty how many dwelling units they actually are looking at.
Yeah, I understand. That, that just caught my eye because we eliminated the commercial aspect of it from the initial meeting. It seems like we've gone down in the number of townhomes, whereas I would expect them to go up.
Addition by subtraction, yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure I saw that correctly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other?
I think I can address your question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Brandon Gaskins. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, American Star Development. I'm also joined by, with the, joined by the property owner, Mrs. Blakely, along with her daughter Shirley Thomas, who I think would also like to address you if y'all will allow her to. And I'll, I'll be happy to give you some additional background. Why are, why are we here? That's a good question, because the previous plan was denied. But if you recall that discussion, at least what we took away from it is it was clear to us that council did not want a PD on this property. But what I heard from most of y'all, and what my client heard, is that y'all would be open to some type of straight zoning. And most of y'all represented that y'all would prefer residential over commercial, which gave us the impression that y'all would be more receptive to this plan. So that's one reason why we're back. Secondly, the comp plan was changed significantly. And although Mr. Westbrook, it's his opinion that it doesn't comply with the comp plan, we respectfully disagree with that. And I'll explain why. In his presentation, he said that it is under the Town Character Residential, but in the staff report and my view of the future land use map is actually suburban character residential, which is intended for most of the newer suburban character neighborhoods along US fifty-two that commonly have smaller lot sizes, a mixture of housing types, and privately maintain open space. And then it goes on to say, common housing densities range from single-family homes to townhomes, which is what we have, with large multifamily apartments permitted only within the adjacent highway commercial overlay. And so I think clearly it is consistent with that future land use category in the comp plan that y'all just adopted. With respect to the highway commercial overlay, I feel like it's a little bit unfair when we came here recently while the comp plan was under review, and we presented something that was consistent with the highway corridor, highway commercial overlay. Commercial in the front, more density in the back, and it even allows up to multifamily, something much more dense than this. But within, certainly y'all have the discretion to say no, but y'all made it clear, y'all did not want a PD and didn't want commercial. So I feel like I'm, we're in a little bit of a catch-twenty-two where, you know, tell us one thing, and then we come back, and now it's because it's not consistent with the highway commercial overlay. But we do feel that it is consistent with the Town Character Residential. It's also consistent with the exact zoning that is right across the street with the Riverstone. That is R three. In addition, the Halsted home, the Halsted project, that is a PD, and it defines the density, but it is also under the R three standards, so it is consistent with that. Now, this project is a little more dense if you look at it on a gross basis, but I think you need to look at those projects on a net basis, because both of those projects have considerable wetlands, whereas this one doesn't. For example, Halsted has over thirty acres of wetlands that are unusable. And so when you look at the density and, and really look at it at a, on an apples-to-apples and an orange-to-orange basis, we think it is consistent with that. With respect to going down from what was planned for, from sixty-seven, I, I think it was actually seventy, down to where we now estimate it at about fifty to fifty-five, and we did present a concept plan at Planning Commission that showed forty-nine, and there was a question about the buffer that we used, and the engineer explained to me, well, that was used because that was initially what was requested by planning staff, but it's, it's not required under the code. But there is buffering requiring, requirements, which would probably push up the density about four to six units. But the reason that it goes down is because when you are drafting a PD, you get to draft the, the road standards. You get to draft the setbacks, and so when you have control over, over that, you can reduce those things and increase your density. But when you go with by-right straight zoning, you have to comply with the standards that are in the code. And the engineer explained to me, when you apply those setbacks and those road standards, that's when the density comes down. And so it is true, under the code, it's allowed sixteen units per acre. There's no way that this property would ever yield that. And we think that what we presented is close to what the final project would look like. But I, I'm sure that y'all are experienced with this. These numbers usually go down once you start factoring in parking, trees, and all that. So it could be much less, well, I, I'm not going to say much less, but less than fifty to fifty-five. So I, I think you do have some protections there. With respect to the county zoning, I think that's a little bit misleading. It is in a Flex one district, which is agricultural, but y'all know it. Y'all drive down Highway fifty-two all the time. That is not agri- an agricultural area anymore. And the county has recognized that. In the county's comprehensive plan, it is designated for the future land use of the future growth corridor. Future growth corridor. So if it's developed in the county, it can probably be much more intense, much denser, and you're not going to get any of that tax money. So we didn't come here because we thought this was an easier path. We came here because my clients approached the town, and that was over a year ago. But the feedback they got is they believed that council would be receptive. So that's what we did. We came, y'all turned it down. And, but what we heard in that last meeting was, okay, well, this property is not suitable for a PD, but we are open to straight zoning. And so that's what we, that's what we've done. Isn't, we're not here looking for an easier path. We've already gone down this road. My clients felt it, that they had an obligation to Ms. Blakely to try again after we got shot down the first time after what we heard. They could have terminated the contract and moved on, but they had, they felt like they had an obligation, not a contractual obligation, but more of a moral or ethical obligation. So that's why we're here. So we think that we have a project that is consistent with the new comp plan, consistent with the surrounding zoning, and it's probably something that's less intense and less dense than what the county would approve, so we would request that you approve it.
Real quick, for, for mine, and this is just me, you misread me if you thought that I was willing to go straight zoning on this property. I, I think that you're asking for two things, annexation and rezoning. Have you tried to go through Berkeley County on this property?
We did, we did not, and for the reasons I just explained. There was an initial conversation with the planning department. Based on that feedback, we thought that, or they thought that the town would be open to this. I can tell you that in projects that I've been personally involved with, with this client, with the county, we've gotten favorable treatment on projects that are much denser than this, and they, in the same area of the county.
For, for me, it just doesn't fit in, and I, I back the staff report, so that's just where I'm at with it. And for tonight, being the first reading, we'll listen to you, and then we'll take our vote, and if it does pass, we'll have the family speak at the second hearing, so. Anyone else?
Yeah. You know, we discussed this last time, and you know, I think everybody up here, and I'm not going to speak for everybody, is, is big on property rights. I, I believe you should, you have a property, you do with your property within reason of that. The problem this creates for me is that with a property this size, you're almost creating a, a cluster, if you will, and, and we're opening that door for a bunch of people to come in here and, and have five acres and say, I want to turn it into a subdivision. And now we've got Highway fifty-two that's, and, and I believe I said all this last time. Now we've got Highway fifty-two with a bunch of little subdivisions, with a bunch of cars pulling out at five miles an hour in the sixty mile-an-hour traffic. It just doesn't create a safe environment. And I think that's, that's the biggest problem I had on this. I believe you'll remember too, that I said last time that I thought this was a, a great opportunity for a commercial spot. I was not in favor then of, of residential in this location. I'm still not, unfortunately. I believe that, I believe that the traffic and safety is a concern coming, coming right off of that area with cars pulling in and out of there. And, and my other concern, and I addressed this last time, was the no connectivity. So obviously, we've got a subdivision that they are going to be constantly traveling because they don't have that connectivity. I'd still like to see something, I want to see them do something with the property, because they want to do something with the property. But I believe that something ought to be geared a little bit more towards a commercial along that corridor. That's just my own opinion. I'm not going to speak for anybody else up here. I'll let them do that. But as you know, we open the door for a lot by doing that on a small cluster. That I have concerns with. The other is, is that, yes, I hear what you're saying. I trust you. I've known you a long time. Yes, I believe that you'd probably be looking at forty-nine, fifty units. This isn't my first time dealing with one of these, but we are opening that door for a hundred and forty-four units. I mean, we really are. So those are, those are my points. Those are my positions, and I appreciate being heard. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My question here is, is at what point do we as council say enough is enough? That's my point. I mean, if you look, and Justin can probably answer this right now, how many of our projects have already started, or how many of our projects have we approved that haven't been started? And then if you look at that nursery that's being developed now with all the houses going in there, and you're right, Riverstone, I thought Riverstone was detached homes versus attached homes, but Halsted was the attached homes. Then you start putting, like, councilman Law says, if, if we say, okay, yeah, we're going to do it here, and then the next guy comes down the road at ten acres or five acres, and then we put it there, we're starting to look kind of like if you go down seventeen, all those townhomes down there that Goose Creek's building, and then you turn down one seventy-six, and look at all those townhomes. I think you start taking away from what this town is really about. It's a small-town atmosphere, but we've actually gotten too big, too fast, and we're still growing, and our infrastructure can't handle it. Our schools can't handle it, and we'll go just keep piecemealing different pieces of property, and I know there's a couple others out there that's probably getting ready to come to us, but my thoughts on townhomes is I'm tired of them. I don't want to see anyone come here, and that's just my theory.
And, and I, I understand your concern, and, and certainly, you know, I respect you and your opinion. I guess where I would come down is, is what is, what is the point of having a comprehensive plan that says that we will support this type of density in this location and then not stand behind it? And I guess I would also look at it as if you, if you don't annex it, you have no control over it, and it is in the future growth corridor of the county, and might be apartments, might be more townhomes. So I, I think this gives you more ability to actually control, to control what comes into the town.
That's fair. I agree with that.
Anybody else? Alright, thank you. Alright, do I have a motion? I'm, I'm going to make the first motion to deny, so. Do I have a second? This is the first reading.
I do not have a, I don't have a problem with it. You're, that's your call.
Right. Being the first reading, I was letting the attorney speak, and then if it gets to a second reading, of course, you'll be able to speak on the project, but we're going to go ahead and go to the vote now. So, a remotion. So I made a motion to deny. Do I have a second? Okay. Okay. Just, um. So it just doesn't move, so.
Yeah, so if there's, if there's no second on the motion and there is no motion to approve, then it would die for lack of a motion.
Okay, so that's where we are. Alright. Old business, there is no old business to be brought before council. We have nobody signed up for public discussion. We will not be going into exec- executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? We're adjourned. That was another new.